Officially called the meeting to order. Let me tell you, I know you're looking at the agenda and thinking you're going to be here until midnight. You will not, nor will we. We are finishing at 8 o'clock. So first of all, let me welcome you to the Healthy Neighborhoods/CPS Board Meeting. This is the first time in years and years that we've met together. The purpose is to look at some issues on which we can work collaboratively. So we'll tonight go through some of those, as many as we can, really to give you an update tonight, more so than working on the issues, but we'll give you an update. At the end of this session, we'll make sure that there's room for public comment. So sometime around 7:40, we're going to stop the presentations and have public comment. And for public comment, you'll just come up to the mic if you'd like to speak at any time during this meeting. Please go over to Ms. Andrews and fill out a yellow card, and I'll call you according to your card. Also, presenters are going to be five minutes or less, and you will speak at the podium next to Mr. Vogt right there, okay? So that's some housekeeping. If anyone needs the restrooms, they're out that door and to the right. So some of you already know that. Okay, so I really, you know, I'm rushing because I really want us to get started. So thank you, first of all, thank you, thank you for being here. As I said, this is the first of many meetings. We'll probably end up meeting quarterly, we'll decide that later. But let me do some quick introductions. I know our mayor is on the way. And, oh, okay. I didn't see you, mayor, okay. All right, so you know, you always have to say good things about people. You never know who's in the room, but we always say, always say and mean good things about our mayor. So there's Mayor Aptab. Pureval, our city manager, is here. Cheryl here, okay, Cheryl is not here yet, but she's, okay, so our city manager Cheryl Long is on the way because she's speaking as well. I see our fire chief, Chief Washington is here. Assistant Police Chief Lieutenant Colonel Lisa Davis is here. Some of our directors, our Director of Department of Transportation Engineering, John Brazina is here, Director of the Cincinnati Recreation Commission, Daniel Betts is here, Division Manager Tiffany Stewart is here, Sergeant Kinnabrew is here as well. From our Law Department, we have John Vogt, and Administration and City Planning Catherine Keogh-Juris is here. Oh, there's Catherine right there, okay. From City Cable, we have Steve Sobel, a Clerk of Council who makes this all happen, Melissa Autry, and also with the Clerk of Council's Office, Sheila Andrews. My Community Outreach Director Anita Turner is there in back, our intern Anthony Stevens to be running around. And I also see someone from Councilmember Reggie Harris's office, Noah Nixon, who's there helping as well. And I think, and I mentioned Sergeant Kinnabrew, okay. I think that's it. Let me introduce our committee members. I will introduce Cincinnati City Council members, and then I will turn it over to my co-conspirators, Dr. Kareem Moffitt and Brandon Craig, to introduce CPS members and to get the roll call going, okay? So I'll just, I'll just start at the far end. Councilmember Scotty Johnson, Councilmember Mika Owens. Okay, we're going to skip over to Councilmember Reggie Harris. Skip, skip, skip to Councilmember Mark Jeffries. All right, thank you, thank you everyone for being here. I'm going to turn it over to Kareem and Brandon to introduce Cincinnati Public Schools.
So we are super excited to be here. We kind of feel like the stepchildren a little bit, but we are not the stepchildren. I want to say to our staff that are here, we've got, I don't know which way to start. That's just, we've got our technical, Jeremy, I'm going to, Jeremy, I'm going to mispronounce his last name. We've got Rob, and we've got Ms. Phyllis Davis. We've got our Superintendent, Aroneta Wright, our Treasurer, Jen Wagner, and then we've got, say again?
Dan Hoyn.
Dan Hoyn, our attorney, one of probably the most important persons in the room. He is in the back there. Do you want to introduce the board members?
Sure. And so for our board members that are attended today, we'll start to my right and your left. We have the ever knowledgeable historian of our board, Eve Bolton, myself, Brandon Craig, we have Dr. Kareem Moffitt, and we have Mary Weinberg. Just also the note, not attended today is the lady who's caring for his father passed, so we want to make sure we keep him in our thoughts. And we had a couple other board members who had other engagements.
Okay, and then would you like to call for a roll call for CPS?
Yes, so I'm going to call on Treasurer Wagner to do the CPS roll call.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Present.
And our, the Vice Chair of this committee, President Pro Tem Victoria Parks is here as well. Welcome. Okay, we're going to go through the agenda, so here's the deal, everybody. We've got a lot of information, look at the agenda, right? We've got a lot of information. Oh, and City Manager Cheryl Long has arrived, yay. And also Chief of Staff for the Mayor, Kazalia Phambro, who really runs City Hall. All right, so let's start, why don't we start by having remarks from our wonderful mayor Aptab Pureval?
There we go, thank you Vice Mayor. Yes, this is for the Woodward students, go down here. Let's start there. Thank you to Woodward for hosting this incredible event, Vice Mayor, thank you. To the board members, thank you so much for agreeing to collaborate on this event. The Vice Mayor is such a wonderful host. Everybody got a shout out. Kinnabrew got two shout outs, unbelievable. Chief Washington's on the cover of Cincy Magazine, only got one shout out, I don't know about that cover boy. But I'm just here to say how incredibly excited I am about this collaboration. Our two governing bodies, City Council and the School Board, make incredibly important decisions, and when those decisions are made in silos, we can have some really drastic unintended consequences. So the leadership displayed here tonight is really extraordinary and inspiring, and we have so many joint projects that we have been working on and will work on. I'll just, I'll just lift one up that Aroneta Wright and I have been, have been talking about. As soon as she got here, Cincinnati, the first meeting we had was on the Public Safety Academy. I know that's a commitment from both the city and the schools to get this program right and to make sure that we continue to have a steady pipeline of talent from our schools that will make sure that both our police and fire are strong in the future. So thank you all so much. Thank you to our leaders up here for this wonderful collaboration.
Thank you, Mayor. All right.
So we have next up some remarks from our historian, our CPS historian. Eve Bolton is going to deliver those on behalf of CPS, just a welcome.
If I might, I'll do it from here because I'm not an official speaker. My worth tonight is to welcome you to, maybe not the building, but as a school, the oldest high school this side of the Alleghenies.
Oh, oh.
Keep that in mind. Keep that in mind, too, that from this school, this hallowed hall and where it first was downtown, we've graduated a president, William Howard Taft. We've graduated a great doctor, Odell Owens. And as a daughter of a boxer, we've also graduated from here our own Ezra Charles, world class. And that's what Woodward is, too. We're very proud of Woodward, we're proud to show it off, and we're very proud of the partnership that exists between the city and the school district. And we're very proud mostly of our students, be they preschoolers or be they 12th graders. And if they aren't everybody's first priority, we better reconsider getting up in the morning. So thank you for caring and visiting us here, and we'd like to show you all of our buildings and visit with all of our students and staff. So thank you for the invite, appreciate it very much, and to the kids.
Thank you so much.
All righty, and before we move our next speaker, we just want to make sure we highlight another one of our wonderful staff that is coming to the building there, so Shana Murphy back there. All righty, so the next speaker will be our Superintendent, Aroneta Wright.
Unlike Aptab, I think I fitted this microphone just fine. So thank you so very much for being here tonight, and thank you to both of our leadership teams for coming together. We do recognize that our governing bodies do really have an impact on what happens in the city, because as the core of the city, we know that the schools is where it all began. And a bit of time, November 2nd was my sixth month on. Members here tonight of the team, and they're new to the team, but we do want to acknowledge them as well. We do have our Chief of Human Resources and Talent, Ms. Katrina Riley. We have our Chief Operating Officer, who has spent much of his time coming in, starting in August, dealing with some of the transportation concerns that I know that we have all heard about, that we've walked into. And we of course have representation from our communications team with Ms. Michelle here as well. So we do want to acknowledge them also. And it's not about hearing from us, it's about hearing from everything else that's happening right now. So to that end, I thank you, I do thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for being here at Woodward. And to Ms. Bolton's point, we do look forward to inviting you to many of our other schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got to say, I was really impressed, so Ms. Wright has been here six months, but within her first, I think, 30 days, she visited every single school at CPS. I thought that was just fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, our next speaker is our City Manager, Ms. Cheryl Long, and she's only been our City Manager, has it been three months? And she's phenomenal.
Good evening. This is amazing. I love to see so many different people at the table and perspectives, the cities and the schools working together. My team, in addition, with the charge of the mayor and this council, has been very, very happy to work with schools, CPS, because as we understand, our schools are not as good with the youth that are walking the streets, living in our communities, going in our rec centers. So we understand the importance of the engagement with the schools and working as a team. Specifically, my relationship with Superintendent Wright, when there's a crisis, we are the first, that's the first person I want to call to make sure she's there to take care of those babies. I have my team represented. We have Director Brazina from Department of Transportation here. We have my interim Assistant City Manager, Amazing Virginia Talent. We have Ed Ramsey in the back, my Director of HR. We have trouble, Fire Chief Washington. We also have, see what I said, trouble. We also have Director Betts from Recreation, Eddie Hawkins. Oh my gosh, all right, okay.
John Davis.
John Davis, sorry. Yeah, we have the whole team that is here to show you the amazing commitment that the city of Cincinnati has, and we are excited to continue to do the work. So thank you for the invite.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to flip the, thank you so much, Ms. Long. And you know, if you want to know why we're changing the order of the agenda, you can ask me privately later, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you the real reason, but I'm not going to say it publicly. So we're going to start with, it's a good reason, though, we're going to start with item C. So now we're going through issues. So let's start with safety in schools and neighborhoods, and our first presenter is Officer Eddie Hawkins from our Cincinnati Police Department.
So actually, we're going to cover two subjects, because there was an issue where they were asking about safety in schools and how we kind of work with young people. So to kind of encompass everything that we do, Tiffany, can you just come on up here so we can just knock it off the park altogether?
So Officer Hawkins, let me say, I didn't realize that Officer John Davis was coming up, too, so that's great. I just want to make sure you're recognized from our Cincinnati Fire Department, and Officer Davis has got to talk about the fire cadets and then...
So we actually do vote, that's the thing. So when you say safety...
Okay.
So the thing is, we collaborate with a multitude of things in reference to our young people, and they kind of all work together. So we wanted to bring up Tiffany from Youth to Work, who was us, and then John and I wanted to kind of give you all a spill on the cadets and the fire cadets and the police cadets, and how we work with our young people in reference to safety in the schools, and how we work in partnership with CPS in reference to safety. So Tiffany, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just to give you a little background of the Youth to Work area, we are a small but mighty division department that works with the city and our partners around like police and fire. Our goal is to provide job experiences and real life experiences for those youth between the ages of 14 or 24 years of age in some of the fields as police, fire, STEM, athletics, IT, aquatics, parks and recs, and among others. We offer job readiness, financial literacy, and most recently, we added mental health to our trainings. This past summer, we hired over 500 youth to serve the city of Cincinnati in all of those fields. We are currently hiring our lifeguards, that is our biggest push right now. We are starting a lifeguard academy, so if you have anyone that's interested in becoming a lifeguard, please, please reach out to me so we can get them in that lifeguard academy. But I'm going to also kind of turn over to our partners here, our internal partners, to kind of talk to you about what they do for the city and the youth as well.
Thank you. So I know this kind of, kind of threw off, so I know we want to talk about the Youth to Work program, so I wanted you all to kind of know how we are able to do the things that we're able to do. So we have the cadet program for young people from the ages of 16 to 18, can't be more than one year removed from high school, and we give young people in the city an opportunity to work with police officers, to kind of know what we do as a whole, what we go through. We do community service, they have an opportunity to visit multiple agencies throughout the city, the agencies that we work with, but most of all, they get educated, and they're able to have a very educated conversation of what law enforcement is, or have an opportunity to go and speak to their peers about what we do as police officers. Now, we work in partnership with the fire cadet program because we, as police officers and firefighters, are always joined at the hip. So we wanted to explain just how important that was. So John to kind of tell you exactly what the fire cadet program entails.
Good evening, everyone. John Davis, District Chief, Cincinnati Fire. Like he said, police and fire, we always work hand in hand in our emergencies, and we try to mimic that in a lot of our cadet programs that we have. We take 14 to 18-year-olds, we take, the majority of them are from CPS schools. This is our 10th year, so I know we get started in June, it's a six-week program from June to roughly about August. The kids wear uniforms, we make sure Chief Washington likes them suited and booted, but from the hats always to the boots, they're always in uniform. We go over every piece of our apparatus, they work in collaboration with a lot of our fire departments. So it's a, it's a, it's a very comfortable name in the firehouse. The firefighters expect, when they see those fire cadets, they expect them to have some of the basic skills. So we basically have what's kind of like a mini recruit class for six weeks. So they get PT, they get life skills, they get job skills, and if we get some of them that are interested, Chief Washington does an excellent job at trying to get them some type of job placement, even if they can't come here. Currently, we have, I think, seven, eight cadets now that are Cincinnati firefighters. So this has proven over nine years that we've been able to get eight firefighters out of this recruit class. There are some things that we can improve upon, but we definitely look forward to having more of your kids be involved. The one thing that we do do is when we get our kids, we'll have them one year, and between me and Eddie, we do try to let them see both sides of public safety. So we don't get every kid, but we'll give them a break because we want them to come back later. So we try to do that, but they do get certified in Stop the Bleed, they get CPR Heart Saver, and the last one is Alice Training that we get from CPD. Some of the cool things that they do, which we tried to get the city manager on, but she's had something to do, we had them rappelling this year out of the fifth floor tower. We challenge them in every way, we do confined space, and what they do is they, they basically lean on teamwork. That concept is in both police and fire, but that's what we do in a nutshell, all right?
Now in regards to safety, so when Vice Mayor Kearney asked me, and she said she wanted me to kind of explain how we work with CPS from a safety, safety aspect, and our cadets pretty much mimic their program. One thing that we've been able to do is we've been able to hold the police cadets year round, but it means they get to work for the entire year. If you go to any of the games, they're usually at work in a lot of our athletic events. Some things that we work with them on is identifying what risk factors are that there are in their schools, to report them to us. Last year, we had at least 25 young people stop some very serious incidents that could have occurred in our schools. You know, they, they've been, you know, as far as their first aid training, we had one young person, when that young person got stabbed, shot downtown, rendered aid. So what we're trying to make sure is that our young people aren't afraid to let people know when there are dangers in the schools. Let people know when there are things that are going on around schools that we need to know about. So we're training them to go out, and there's nothing wrong with saying something. Think this whole thing with being a snitch and all that, we dismiss that. So what we're doing is we're putting out 80 to 85 young people per year that are empowered to go out and make a difference. So what they do is, they're our eyes and ears. A lot of these young people that have went through our programs have very good working relationships with the school's security. So when they, so when they get their Alice Training, they're kind of like mini trainers. So there's a multitude of things that they do in reference to safety at the schools. We bring them in a lot of meetings that we have with some of Cincinnati Public School Safety Teams, so they've had the opportunity to see what life looks like on this side. And I can honestly say that we've pretty much been able to change the mindset of quite a few young people in regards to police, fire, and overall safety.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much. So Officer Hawkins also, so we not, we not only talked about the workforce development, but we rolled into safety in schools as well. Let me jump back to workforce development for a second and ask Mr. Betts, would, would you like to comment on the Youth to Work program? Okay, and I think someone was going to mention the need for lifeguards, and what's going on with that?
One of the things that we're doing for the lifeguards is recreating a lifeguard academy that's actually going on now, we're partnering with the county on that. So if you have any youth between those ages, please send them, we're having classes now at Mount Auburn Pool. They can call us at 352 Pool, and then they can get in and sign up. They don't actually have to sign up, they can just show up. So all that information is on our website at cincirec.org.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Madam Chair, can we have the ages repeated for the academy?
Yeah, the academy is going to be for 14 to 24.
14 to 24, okay, thank you so much. Okay, and so we, we hope you'll be here for just a little while, because I know Officer Hawkins has another engagement. So if you could, we'll just see how it goes, okay? Because we're not going to take questions yet, but just, just keep that in mind. I'm sorry, Ms. Stewart?
I just wanted to add, too, that the applications for the cadets open up in January, and then the Mayor's Career Expo will be on March 11th. So one of the other things that we're doing with the Youth to Work program is we're starting a job readiness program in January to get those kids ready for the expo.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, really appreciate that, thank you. Okay, and we have Cincinnati, our City Manager Cheryl Long is developing a new program, Career Pathways Initiative, and I didn't know if she wanted to, oh, okay, Ms. Talent, Attorney Talent, we'll, we'll talk about that, thank you so much. She's our Assistant City Manager.
I'm really glad to be every, with everyone. Can I get a show of hands, like staff, who's CPS staff in the crowd? Okay, and what about CPS parents? Great, any students? Okay, that's helpful to me to kind of understand who I'm talking to. So we're so pleased to be rolling out the Career Pathways Initiative, really championed by Mayor Pureval as a way to strengthen our already excellent Youth to Work program. So you heard a little bit just now about broadly Youth to Work, the Lifeguard Academy, summer opportunities with rec, the police and fire cadet programs. Our goal with bringing new staff to this at the City Manager's Office level is to make this bigger and better than ever, to expand offerings in the community, and also to look internally for other year-round opportunities with city departments. The overall goal of this in a nutshell is to get city kids and city jobs. So not just summer jobs, not just co-ops, not just, you know, part-time jobs during the school year, but really thinking about how we can expand collaboration with CPS, with our universities, with Cincinnati State, and some of our excellent post-secondary programs, to really get kids in the 18 to 24 range in our workforce in the spaces that we need them. So it's very new, but over the next year, we'll be building it out. I'm really pleased to announce that we've hired Elizabeth Kraft to be our Career Pathways Coordinator, and she starts next week, and I think we'll be poised to hit the ground running. So that's all I'll say about that. Any questions?
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Okay, so now we're going to flip back to A, and A, the topic on A is pedestrian safety. So we would like to start with an update from our Director from our Department of Transportation Engineering, John Brazina, and is Ms. Mel McVeigh speaking as well? No? Okay. All right, Mr. Brazina, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the committee and the CPS Board for the opportunity to address everybody tonight. I'm John Brazina, I am the Director of Transportation and Engineering with the City of Cincinnati. And with me tonight, I have Mel McVeigh, he is our Program Manager for our Pedestrian Safety Program. So this fiscal year, DOTE and the Pedestrian Safety Program has received an unprecedented amount of funding from City Council. Thank you very much for that. We've received, allocated, identified $3 million for pedestrian safety improvements around our schools and our rec centers. So we just finished up our general pedestrian safety program, re-finalizing some of the priorities from the community councils at the end of this year. And then in January of next year, we're going to start the process over with identifying the priorities around the schools and the rec centers. We'll be reaching out to the community councils at that time, and also looping CPS in at that time, from Twister. Some of the improvements that we're planning on is speed humps to calm traffic around the schools and the rec centers. We're also looking at some curb extensions to shorten the crosswalks that the students will be using, and then also raised crosswalks. So we're going to be implementing real traffic calming tools near the schools and the rec centers, so look for that sometime next year. Any questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mary? If I can get my mic working. Okay, thank you so much, John, for the update. My name is Mary Weinberg, and I'm the Health and Safety Chair. I will be giving a update kind of a little bit on pedestrian safety and what we, from CPS, what we've encountered and what we have experienced. So pedestrian safety has become a huge concern among the CPS district, as you all have heard throughout the news. Throughout the years, this topic has taken the lives of some of our CPS students and has caused many injuries to others. Pedestrian safety this year alone continues to place worry among our community, our staff, our parents, and our students. And as representatives of the CPS Board, we don't have all of the answers, but we hope to work, of course, with our city colleagues on what can be done to form not only an engaging relationship with each other, but to really fix this huge problem. So just to give some background, in 2019, the former Chair of Health and Safety initiated a collaboration with different community members, and there was a collaboration within City Council as well, and their Safety Committee, that helped with safe routes to school. The advisory team of the school travel plan, they would meet quarterly to discuss progress on this particular committee. During this time, the city was able to submit a grant that allowed for CPS in the city to review crosswalks and convert them to zebra crossings, updating signage, adding speed bumps, or raised crosswalks. There was a pilot plan to add reflective strips on the poles near crosswalks, and there was also a recommendation for pedestrian-triggered red flashing light cameras, and this was scheduled to be complete by the end of 2020. There was also a resolution that was presented to the Board on March 2 of 2020 advocating to the city for a change in the city's charter to allow red light cameras in the school zones. It included in the resolution that the language would be added to, add the funding for the safety grant to be designated to the red light cameras, and there was even a recommendation added to the strategic plan at the time for pedestrian safety under Measure 2.8. There was also a Pedestrian Steering Committee that was formed in March of 2020, and it included parents, teachers, city council members, the Health Department, City Recreation Commission, neighborhood councils, and the Cincinnati Police Department. They were in attendance at these particular meetings. So they had a focus for this Vision Zero for Youth pedestrian accidents. The updates would include a systematic analysis for the Cincinnati Safe Routes to School and Vision Zero for Youth. So the data that, the data report that was driven included roadway safety approaches, school travel safety analysis, high-risk roadway variables, data sources, crash analysis, Cincinnati youth bicycle and pedestrian crashes, risk factors and sample size, preliminary results, and it also included crash rate per mile by number of roadway risk factors, then next steps. A copy of this full report is also available at the Board Office. So in February of 2021, there was a presentation regarding an update on pedestrian safety, and if you could look through your documents at a different time, or if you want to look at them now, it included the Cincinnati SRTS Vision Zero Plan. And in February of 2022, in the Health and Safety Committee meeting, it was stated that all Vision Zero pedestrian safety projects within the City of Cincinnati for 2021 were Also included in your documents is, there was a form coming from the city updating CPS on the updates that they were able to complete. The memo included information about pedestrian safety projects, and it also included that they needed a new crosswalk near Aiken and Walnut Hills High School, they needed flashers for Woodward High School, and there were other projects in design, and of course, it updated CPS on the funding that was given through the city, the safe routes to school, the city pedestrian safety funding, and the State of Ohio Pedestrian Safety Improvement Plan. So throughout this year, the committee, we have gotten complaints from, of course, parents and community members regarding pedestrian safety found at the schools. And the list kind of includes a couple of our schools, such as Pleasant Ridge Montessori, Schroeder High School, SCPA, and Cove Dale School, and also includes Walnut Hills. So in the committee, we are working to make sure that our administration, and of course, our superintendent is aware, and we are hoping to obviously fix these things. Pedestrian safety is a serious topic, and I was unable to present a video here at the meeting, but I did send it to each of your emails, and it was an interesting video in which a student from Cove Dale in 2019, he was the winner for a pedestrian safety video, and it was actually titled "It's Lit Not to Get Hit," and it's a really cute video. And I think as we're moving forward, it would be really good to engage our students and really help with today's pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I just want to mention to the audience and the public that all of the reports here will be filed, and we'll ask for a vote on that from City Council at the end of the meeting, because there are several reports. That way, you can go to our website, look up our Healthy Neighborhoods Committee meeting for tonight, and you'll find all those reports online, so that'll be great. Did I turn that off? I'm having a hard time with this mic. Next on the agenda is crossing guards.
Yes, I'm going to just give a brief overview of CPS and the crossing guards. So there's just a quick background to the crossing guards that I'm going to share. Prior to 1999, the city had paid for CPS crossing guards, and in the latter years, that was not the case. But in 2008 to the present, the city has resumed covering the cost for CPS crossing guards. We are currently looking to fill spots and encourage those to spread the word about becoming a CPS crossing guard. And in February of 2022, there was an update at my Health and Safety meeting, which I think we had 144 crossing guard positions for CPS, and at the time, I think 98 positions were filled, we had 44 vacancies, but I am looking forward to hearing from the update from the city in terms of if those numbers had changed. And it's really exciting to see the increase in the amount of pay that we were able to get for also our crossing guards as well. And moving forward, we would love to have all of those positions filled for our CPS crossing guards. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Ms. Talent if you wanted to comment on crossing guards from the city.
Thank you to the Vice Mayor, actually, our HR Director, Ed Ramsey, is here, so I'd invite him to come up.
And while Mr. Ramsey is coming up, I just wanted to recognize Representative Cedric Denson, who's here as well. So thank you, Representative Denson, for coming. Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you. As a brief update, I'd like to say that we do have a total of 131 crossing guard positions filled, so we've increased our complement. We still do have 37 vacancies, but we have filled significantly more positions at that point in time. We're currently paying them $15 an hour. These are part-time seasonal employees that are for the city, though reimbursed from CPS, I believe this is an odd relationship, as they are now employees of the Police Department pursuant to an ODOT recommendation, I believe, from 2012, that has brought the appointments. We have a class starting next week, we've got 10 applicants, three are confirmed, that have gone through the background check, so we do hope to continue hiring.
Can you repeat that? It's just a little difficult for us to hear. I don't know if you all are having a difficult time here, but just can you repeat what you said at the end a little bit louder?
We currently have 131 filled positions. These are seasonal, part-time employees of the Cincinnati Police Department. This is a relationship that was established pursuant to some ODOT guidance that a law enforcement agency appoint these crossing guards. I believe that guidance has since been rescinded, but it's still the situation today. We have a total of 37 vacancies still, so we have increased our complement, but we've also increased our filled positions as well from the February numbers. This is a $15 an hour job, and since we're still looking for people, we advertise on social media, backpack flyers, rec centers, we would encourage people to continue to apply. It can be a process, as there's a background check, obviously, that could take 30 to 60 days. But we are starting a new class next week, I believe, with 10 applicants, and three have already confirmed through the background check process.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Okay, either we have to... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Weinberg?
I just wanted clarification, you said it's $15 an hour, correct? Okay, this one's to make sure.
And Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it, it's very important. How many positions over time have we had for crossing guards? I'm adding this, two numbers you gave me, it looks like a couple hundred, or how many? Seems low to me.
The total complement?
How many are we supposed to, how many positions are there?
If everything were filled, it would be 138, or, I'm sorry, 68, 160.
168? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to another topic related to pedestrian safety, and I'll start with Councilmember Mark Jeffries.
Thank you. I think this is around driver education, and so just broadly, I'll frame the problem this way. I think anecdotally, I would guarantee you, any person here would raise their hand, have they seen erratic behavior on the streets. Every single one of us. Today alone, I saw people completely ignore red lights. It is happening rampantly across the city, we all know that anecdotally. A recent police traffic blitz also put some data behind this. Over 30%, I think it was 34% of the people who were stopped did not have a driver's license. That's a third of the people did not have a driver's license. Many reasons for that, it might have been suspended, they, during COVID, I think a lot of people were unable to go to, you know, the Department of, you know, License or Bureau, whatever, BMF or whatever it's called. There you go, motor vehicles, always changes its name. But whatever the reason, driver, education of drivers is a clear challenge, it is one of the issues, not the only issue. There's issues enforcement, there's issues of engineering that we talked about, and broader education. So this issue, obviously, there's many verticals on it. There's educating people already have their license, there are, how do you think about driver's ed in general, whether it's in CPS or outside of CPS, especially for kids who can't afford the $400 or $600 that it requires, which is, you know, fairly substantial for some families. So it's the frame of the issue, I think we need to think about ways to solve that. You know, we're just engaging in some of those discussions, not just with CPS, but I think it's a broader issue that we need to tackle.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Well, you know, I just want to say driver's ed is expensive, and so the idea of having it in the schools, I think is a great idea to bring it back, and I know you've been talking to the superintendent about that, and school board members, which is great. We're excited about opening up that conversation, so that's wonderful. I know a lot of young people who can't afford to pay that amount of money, just wait until they're 18, and just get their license, but it doesn't mean they're good drivers. And so it's really important for their safety and the safety of others that they're, that they take driver's ed, so that's important. Thank you so much for putting that idea forward. Okay, now, next we have, and Mary Weinberg mentioned a safety campaign, and I know that Councilmember Scotty Johnson's office is taking the lead on that, so Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick note, Ms. Bolton, thank you for recognizing those amazing people that came out of Woodward High School. I myself am a proud product of graduate of Woodward High School. Thank you. I didn't walk these hollow halls, the building didn't look this good back then. I'm not going to tell you what year, but I too am a proud graduate of Woodward High School. Thank you, Ms. Bolton. As it's already been said, as my colleague, Mr. Jeffries, talked about, it is, we are almost at a crisis when it comes to safe driving, not only in Cincinnati, but throughout this country. So we are looking to make sure that we involve the young people, that unfortunately, as Ms. Weinberg talked about, I don't think we've had any fatalities this year with any of our young people, but we're trying to do everything we can to prevent that. So we are looking to get a campaign rolling where we involve our schoolchildren. So it's, we would love to try to move to where we are, we're getting some memorable slogans, and I just heard one that's amazing that we might need to bring back. "It's Lit Not to Get Hit." So that's just a part of the creativity that we know that is in the Cincinnati Public School system. So we are working to try to see if we should do it at different levels, like K through 8, and then 8 through 12. We will be looking to try to get some PSAs, some radio time, and television time, and/or maybe even some billboards and slogans, so everybody is aware of how valuable, first and foremost, we all are, one to another. And that's always, that's also talking about how we operate these motor vehicles in the city. Cincinnati Police just did a blitz, and as Mr. Jeffries talked about, it was unbelievable the amount of people that are driving vehicles that are not, don't have driver's license. And then if you don't have driver's license, more than likely, you don't have insurance. So people are left to clean that mess up, but that's a whole nother conversation at the state level. But we are looking to get our young people involved, and my, Denzel Tubbs, my office will be leading this charge, and we will be collaborating with the fine school board members up here, and Superintendent Wright, to get this going. And so we got to all participate. We, Cincinnati is, can be the greatest city on the planet, and we want to make sure that it's going to be a collaborative effort to get us there. So prepare our young people to get involved, and I look forward to doing that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Johnson? Ms. Bolton?
I will say that the, how shall I say it? When we worked on this together before, it was a council and board effort to involve our students and raise their voices, and indeed, it was Saturday meetings, it was all kinds of community meetings. So I think we do, interestingly enough, if we look to our students, I think that's a great source to raise their voice and their creativity. But it was, at that time, when we did this last time, it was a council and a board activity focusing on our students.
Well, you know, Ms. Bolton and everybody else, we're going to let, well, I think it's imperative to make sure that the younger people are leading this charge under our direction, so we will get that rolling out. And honestly, I would love to start, to see something started before they break for Christmas recess, so that we'll be moving that along, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so our next topic, and we are really rolling along here, I think people are surprised. So we're down to E. We've gone through A, B, C, and D, we're making progress. So E is absenteeism and transportation, and I will let my CPS colleagues introduce that topic.
So we're going to defer to our Board Historian, Board Member Bolton over here, for transportation, and she is the transportation guru, so if you all watch a board meeting, that's her.
Well, this is a surprise. For about four decades, there's been a great partnership between Metro and CPS. It's an interesting, one time we met with council, and one of the council members said, "Well, what about your fleet? How do you handle your fleet?" We have no fleet because we have that partnership, and it was a great partnership. Transportation, Cincinnati Public does not charge any of our students for transportation because it's more important for them to get to school, it's more important for us to know that the families aren't arguing about whether or not they're going to do the laundry or they're going to have bus fare. I mean, these are very critical things to have access. And when we changed the relationship between Metro and Cincinnati Public, and I really want to publicly thank the Vice Mayor because she was extremely vocal when we brought this to council last year, about this same time, actually. When we changed it, what changed was that the extra routes could no longer be part of the business plan for Metro. And when that happened, we got kind of late notice on it and had to fix it, and then in the midst, a perfect storm occurred, too, because you had a change in manpower, women power, because people were not being bus drivers. Then you had a problem of not enough buses, and then you had a problem of us trying to make sure that we had healthy starts, especially for our teenagers, or we had an additional problem of wanting to encourage more of a green approach to all that we were doing. At any rate, we remain in almost a state of crisis. We've had a superintendent that has been on a daily basis trying to fix this issue, but it goes to not enough drivers, not enough buses, it goes to the change of the relationship between CPS and Metro, because unfortunately, our teenagers are not part of the business plan. And that's a problem. And from that standpoint, so that we get this aware, we do yellow buses for And from that standpoint, so that we get this aware, we do yellow buses for our K through six initially, and now we do it too for K through eight, in part because the state legislature decided that charter kids, parochial kids, private school kids could not get on a mass transit. And it was a matter of law. That happened last year too, as part of the perfect storm. So all these things coming together, really confusing and making a crisis. So right now, we are in search of other solutions throughout the year, improving, but other solutions for next year. And that next year, we can't get our kids to school without Metro. And we can't get our little ones out to elementary schools without multiple vendors and access to buses and safe routes. And so we really come to the city to ask for help in addressing this problem and address the issue of, City Council appoints half of the Sorda Board, and this falls under Sorda. And it's important, and the commissioners appoint the other folks. But we have been trying to fix it, and last year, City Council tried to help us fix it, and we were very appreciative of it. But as the economy either grows or gets better, or manpower, women power starts to see more drivers, and the economy starts to see the availability of buses, as we position ourselves for having those items and those people, we will need the city to help us at all efforts that they can make to see that our teenagers, particularly on Metro, and that's, that's can be seventh and eighth grade, but it definitely is ninth through 12. They're right now riding regular routes, which has made families not want to have their seventh and eighth graders, because there are no longer extra routes that were devoted just to them, is really confused what we're able to do. And indeed, we do have on-time issues, improving, but still on-time issues, and therefore tardiness issues, and therefore loss of instructional time. Plus, the great push for the city folks is that our arrival and particularly our dismissal times have impacted our neighborhoods. And that we have to be aware of, and is also the pedestrian safety piece. It's a huge problem. We can't solve it by ourselves. And so this is a great opportunity to come together and put our kids first, especially our teenagers, because they need to be placed first. It's a difficult world that they live in, and we shouldn't be making it more difficult for them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bolton. I was going to say, a public comment, there is, is Derek Drifmeyer here? Well, come on up to the microphone, please, because your comment or question is about transportation, so this is a good time for you to speak. Just please keep in mind, public comment is two minutes, and Ms. Andrews is starting the timer. Please speak directly into the mic. Oh, it's not on, okay. One second.
Does work? I represent a group of, well, Tuesday at the board meeting, my group was about 80 people, 80 parents who have had serious transportation issues. Today, it's about 130. Monday, my child was dropped off on the side of Montgomery Road half an hour early with no parents there. This is a repeat problem. Yesterday, the bus just didn't come, so my child didn't go to school because I had to work. Today, the bus didn't come in the afternoon, so parents had to go pick up their children. This is a repeat occurrence almost daily, and the city needs to step in, or the state needs to step in. It's a major problem.
Ms. Bolton, would you like to comment?
This is every day, and every day, it is, these sorts of things are addressed to the best that we can. The resources apparently are not available, and more particularly, our children are not a priority to other folks. And that's a problem that we need to take, I think, to Sorda.
Can we have another comment from Omar? Is that Mr. Childress? I'm not sure. And are you speaking about transportation or a different topic? Okay, okay, we'll call you back then. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so the problem with transportation is something that I think as City Council, we have to understand how the whole system works. And then we could all put our heads together and come up with a viable solution. So let's, let's make sure we do that, and we'll, you know, we'll start working on it right away. I know that Sorda slash Metro, because of issue seven, they have funding, they are definitely committed to our children, to our city. And so I think it's a matter of, let's, you know, let's find out what's causing the problems, and then work together on finding a solution.
And Madam Chair, again, I want to double my compliments and thank you for your leadership last year. And council tried to do some things, and we did some reports back and forth, and at least we're committed to our kids. Appreciate it very much. Your leadership was very appreciated.
Okay, well, thank you.
I just want to also say, we hear you as a CPS board. Sometimes it's important to acknowledge the fact that you are not being ignored. We hear you, and from, I think this is the one time I'm going to speak on behalf of everybody up here, but particularly CPS. It hurts me every single time a student is impacted by transportation. So we are doing the best we can. It's not enough right now, but we are working to work on this. We really, really are. And we are humbly coming to our colleagues here at the city, because we really, really, really want to get this better and then right. So please don't feel ignored. We really are listening, and we are working behind the scenes.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we also want to talk-
Madam Chair, can I just make one?
Sure, sure.
I just wanted to just confer with our Assistant City Manager. You know, this is an extremely important topic, but I also want to be very clear and manage expectations. And so when we think about this brainstorm, I think our biggest influence is in our relationship with Sorda, and like, that's where we can go. So when we think about, okay, you look to council, what can council do? Like, that's the lane that we can fully occupy. And so, you know, this is truly sort of like very collaborative. So I don't want to say like, we're going to work on it, and when we come back with a more narrow solution, which I think we can, that it feels underwhelming, but you know, just managing that the real leverage we have is our relationship with Sorda, and particularly how we engage with them.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Harris. Really appreciate that.
Madam Chair, can I ask you?
Mr. Johnson?
I mean, this is very important, because we're talking about children. So it is very important. Is this, was this the yellow bus, sir? Or was this yellow bus? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. I just want a clarification on that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
So we, yeah, so this is a good time for the, everyone knows the SARAH training model. And so that's the model that we're trying to use to actually solve problems. So we can use that SARAH model to solve this problem.
Just a clarification on that, because Dr. Eve, yellow bus is not Sorda. So just, just in the interest of, is this also happening on the Sorda buses for the nine to 12? Or is it primarily a yellow bus issue? Just because if it's yellow bus, that's not a Sorda issue. If it's both, then yes, we can go to Sorda.
It's on my, Madam Chair. That's why I separated the, for our younger kids being on yellow bus, and then this conflict if we have, as we moved our seventh and eighth graders to yellow bus, because parents and also the state legislature said the seventh and eighth graders shouldn't be on mass transit. So that's part of, that's how it kind of works that way. But yes, our problem is with the Metro piece and not having the extra routes any longer, or that were devoted in part to our students, but also is the number of vendors we have to have for the yellow bus. And I think it's very important for folks to understand about Cincinnati Public. We also have any number of vans to deliver many of our students that are on IEPs or have special. We have ambulances bring our kids to school. So this transportation issue is huge, and it is an equity issue, as well as an economic and instructional issue. And most importantly, as Scotty points out, it's a safety issue.
Safety issue. And then Dr. Moffett, you were commenting on the bus cards.
So the piece with Sorda, we have the yellow transportation for our younger ones. That is an issue. That's not Sorda. But for the Sorda piece, we've got students that are missing bus cards. So if they don't have bus cards to get on the bus, you know, that's problematic. And that would be for our high school students or the seventh and eighth grade students who have opted into taking the Metro bus in lieu of the yellow bus, because the yellow bus is not dependable. So it does impact the seventh and eighth graders too. It is about Sorda, which is the relationship that you all have an impact on, and that's where we're coming for. You know, we've got a bunch of different lanes that we're staying in, but what you all can impact is with Sorda. We have students who are really, in essence, potentially seventh and eighth, but particularly nine through 12, who do not have bus cards. And this is almost the end of the first semester.
So you know, the first thing we're going to have to do Monday morning is pull together our task force. We're going to have to jump on this. We're going to have to get our task force together. This is a solvable problem. This is definitely a solvable problem, and so we're going to work on this. Okay, Councilmember Harris?
Just one more question, Bolton, just for clarity. So last year, 2021, legislature in Columbus passed legislation that said that an entity, the body, like the district, could not contract with a mass transit, could not contract with a mass transit, could not contract with a mass transit agency to provide transportation.
The state legislature and its infinite wisdom determined that the students in greater Cincinnati and throughout the state of Ohio, if they go to charter schools or parochial schools or private schools, and by the way, Cincinnati Public is responsible for transporting all of the district's kids, all of the city kids within our district, meaning we are responsible not just for transporting our K through 12 kids that attend CPS, we are expected to also, our other kids who don't attend our district, but the parochial kids, the charter kids, the private kids, we are supposed to be transporting them as well. And they have to receive the same services as ours do. But the specific law spoke only about charter kids and parochial kids, about transporting them.
And let me just ask, I know that Representative Cedric Denson is here, and Representative Catherine Ingram, soon to be Senator Catherine Ingram, is here as well. Would either or both of you like to comment? And if so, please come up to the podium.
They said no.
Oh, you said no, okay. All right, we'll talk though. Okay, all right. All right, so we, Monday morning, we figure out who's going to be on the task force, and we'll get moving, okay? So thank you so much for that. So, you know, another issue that CPS and the city collaborate on is for our young people experiencing homelessness. And so let's start with, we're going to talk about available resources. And I know, Dr. Moffett, you wanted to make sure we had CPS's definition of homelessness.
So I just wanted to really quickly talk about, we use the McKinney-Vito-Vento homeless definition, and students are considered, students are considered homeless if they do not have a residence of their own. So if you live with your grandparents, you're considered homeless. It's, the definition specifically states lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence due to hardship or similar reason, and the child is not in the physical custody of a parent or guardian. So that's the definition of that. If you have a parent that's incarcerated or incapable of keeping you physically, that's kind of understood. But we do have a large number of students within CPS, and I don't know that number, but we have a large amount of students who couch serve, who live with people, and they don't want to designate themselves as homeless, but when they do, they get extra resources. So, sorry about the feedback. So just to put this in somewhat of a perspective, before the pandemic, there were 23,885 students in Ohio that were considered homeless. That's a huge number. So we do have a huge number of students that are homeless. So I just wanted to put it in context of what the definition of homelessness is for our students in our schools.
So you're saying in Ohio, before the pandemic, there were 23,000 students, actually more than that, experiencing homelessness?
23,885 students that were designated as homeless in Ohio. And we know that that number is much more, because they're just not reporting. And, you know, if you live with your grandparent, or if you just live with a friend, you don't have a residence, a permanent residence, then that is considered homeless. And I also want to say, a lot of our kids, their parents live with the grandparents. That's technically considered homeless, a homeless student, just to put that in perspective.
Okay, so I'd like to ask our Assistant City Manager, Virginia Talent, to talk about some of the resources that the city has to offer, and then we'll have someone from CPS to talk about other resources offered by CPS.
While she's on her way up, we have 3,500 students in CPS that are homeless.
By this definition, okay. Ms. Owens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify, where does the definition come from? Is this a federal definition guideline? Just curious.
That is under HUD's, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act of 2009.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, so I'm curious, I don't know, maybe, so, but what if a student is as a fixed residence, but does live with the grandmother? Right, like, I mean, an example is maybe the grandmother doesn't have custody, but kid was born in a house, goes to the house, lives at, like, there's a fixed residence. Like, I get worried about the inflation of a number, like, assigning a label of instability to a situation that actually could be stable? And so is it more about the fixing of the address or the relationship of the student to the caregiver?
Yeah, please read us that definition again, because it seemed as though there were two parts.
Okay, so the definition, it says, for purposes of this act, the term homeless, homeless individual and homeless person means an individual or family who lacks a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence, an individual or family with a primary nighttime residence that is a public or private place not designed for ordinary use, as a regular sleeping accommodation for human beings, including a car parked, abandoned building, bus or train station, airport or camping ground, an individual or family living in a supervised publicly or privately operated shelter designed to provide temporary living arrangements, an individual who resides in a shelter or place not meant for human habitation, and who is existing in an institution where he or she has temporarily resided. And then they have a couple more, but I think you get the general gist of, it's really talking about the family unit and the resident, the family unit and the residence. And that's how we register students for school, is through the residence and the verification of utility bills, et cetera. So that's why that designation is based on residence.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Talent?
This on, to the Vice Mayor, I wanted to invite Rebecca Beach, who's the Director of Project Connect at CPS, to come up and just say a few words before I weigh in.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Kareem Moffett, you did an excellent job explaining the McKinney-Vento definition of homeless. I did just want to add clarity on the piece regarding unaccompanied youth. So a student has to be homeless and not in the care of a parent or legal guardian to qualify as an unaccompanied youth. So we do look at the entire situation and why that student is not with the parent to determine. So we do look at the entire situation and why that student is not with the parent to determine eligibility. And yes, we identified almost 3,500 students last school year, and we are at approximately 1,900 students so far this school year. But identification goes on throughout the school year.
Is that additional on top of the 3,500?
So 3,500 was last school year. So we don't have our final count until the end of a school year because identification occurs daily as we receive referrals and as students come in to register and indicate that they're in a temporary living situation.
Thank you so much. Ms. Beach, can you tell us about Project Connect, please?
Sure. So Project Connect is operated under the Federal McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Act, which is part of the No Child Left Behind Act. And it requires that school districts do remove barriers for students experiencing homelessness. And so we are the program operating that law within Cincinnati Public Schools. And so we identify students. We have a resource center where families can come and receive what they need for school. We provide social and emotional enrichment as well as academic support. And we work with transportation to make sure our students are routed because the letter of the law is school stability. And so we want to ensure that students who are displaced are able to get back to their school of origin if that is what they choose.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Beach, can you talk about emancipating students? If they need that, their homes, can you talk a little bit about what else you do to help students who may need that?
Sure. So there is actually no longer emancipation in the state of Ohio unless you are in JFS custody. And so those will be our kisser students. But students experiencing homelessness, if they are not in the care of a parent or legal guardian and need assistance with any type of educational documentation, can utilize a surrogate. And so the Project Connect department are all trained surrogates. And so we can operate on behalf of a parent or legal guardian for purposes of enrollment, IEPs, or any other educational services.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Talent, would you like to add?
I just want to thank Rebecca for her really tremendous leadership and the excellence that Project Connect brings to the district. I mean, it really is transformational and just, she gave like a really brief snapshot of what they're doing, but it's so critical. And you know, this has been a council that's been really focused on improving poverty in our community. And the best way that we can do that is to keep kids in school. And so thank you, thank you for everything that you're doing and for all of your partnership. I don't want to belabor the problem because I think we can all acknowledge that there is a problem. But I would just highlight that we're talking about unsheltered families. So families that go into our shelter system. 23% of individuals who entered shelter in Hamilton County in 2021 were children. So we're talking about people 17 years or younger. And so that's 17, or I'm sorry, 23% of a total of approximately 6,000 people. And I think that 2022 is on trend. Like, we haven't had really an overall reduction, if anything, a little bit of an increase. I really want to take an opportunity to thank this council for some of the really transformational investment in this space. I know several of you, maybe all of you, were at the Bethany House ribbon cutting. The city leveraged $5 million of public investment to make that project happen. And it's the largest family shelter provider in our area, and it's just up the road. It's here in Bond Hill. And we'll allow them to do more than they have been doing in better ways. That will lead to better outcomes for our families. So thank you for that. And also for this council's historic investment in human services, including millions of dollars to support rapid rehousing and shelter, but specifically upstream initiatives. So things that are really intended to keep people out of the shelter system and in housing, which are the most important things that we can do. And specifically, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Owens for some of her leadership recently in the human services space and the direction that council has given the administration around impact, including an Impact Award that will launch an RFP for in January that will specifically be focused on eviction, prevention, and housing stabilization. Acknowledging the affordability crisis that we're in, the high rates of rent inflation. So I don't want anybody to feel like there isn't hope. There's a lot of hope, but this is going to be an uphill problem that is going to take all of our collective efforts to solve. And any questions, we're in it together. So thank you, and thank you, Rebecca, honestly, for everything that you're doing.
Thank you so much. I wondered if Ms. Owens wanted to talk about the Impact Award.
Sorry about the mic. First of all, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for really innovating with me. And that's what it's about. What we want to do is be able to target and really be prescriptive in the problems that we want to solve for. And so as we looked at our human services funding, we had the opportunity, and council has the opportunity to determine what those priorities are. As council, we said the number one thing that we should be looking at right now is keeping people having a roof over their heads. And so when we're looking at this Impact Award, we're looking at 33% of our human services dollars going towards that in the most innovative way. And then us being able to track, as we develop an RFP that's going to be prescriptive, us being able to track what that impact is so that we know we are applying the most world-class solutions, if you will. And we're really making, you know, traction towards this issue. So thank you to my colleagues and thank you to the administration who carries out this work every single day.
Thank you. Ms. Talent, thank you so much. Well, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Craig.
I just wanted to mention also that, you know, one of the things with regards to homelessness in our schools is that we know that where someone has housing stability, they also are more likely to be in a same school for the entire year. They're more likely to produce better results in their education. And so we know that housing stability as a general rule of life is creates better wealth in the community, creates better opportunities, experiences. And so I think it is really important that we are also all thinking about this from not just our roles on our respective public official positions, but as a general community thing, to be thinking about the effects of stuff like drug addiction, of housing stability, of families who are struggling to take care of multiple members of their family for whatever reason that may create situations in which they're now living from multiple places. And especially with our younger students, too, because the earlier that a child has some stability and is able to start learning and is able to start building those skills, the better they are throughout their entire educational process. And I know that's one of the major goals for Project Connect has been to ensure for those really young students who are really early on in their educational process, that gets some stability to be able to continue in their education, to grow from that. And so I think it's really important, all of the facts, that we are so dedicated to this. But I think we also want to make sure that we're reaching out to our community as a whole and asking those folks who can help to help, or those folks who can provide resources to provide those resources to us, so that we can better help those in need.
Thank you so much. Mr. Johnson?
Just quickly, thank you, Ms. Owens, for your leadership. And it's been said, this council is committed to make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that we are putting people first. If we're not going to be about putting people first, along with my CPS colleagues and everybody in the city, if we're not going to be about putting people first, then therefore we all need to just pack up and leave. Because if we don't have people invested in, we don't have a city. If we don't invest in the young people, then we don't have a future for a city. So we have to be about that, as it's already been said, that this is, this move that has been led by Councilwoman Owens is historical, and it's an investment in people. And we have to make sure people know they matter. From, as Mr. Craig talked about, from a very, very young age all the way up, they have to know they matter. And when people know they matter, they do better. So it is good to see this collaborative effort, but we got to make sure it's sustainable. We got to make sure we're doing things that sustain the effort to make sure people know they matter in Cincinnati. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. All right. Okay, so everybody, look how we're doing. We have talked about, and we've just, you know, hit the high points. This was kind of, let's hit some issues, let's get some information out there, let's see how we're doing. So we talked about pedestrian safety, pedestrian and driver education, a public, a public safety campaign with our students. We talked about plans for safety, for safe schools and neighborhoods. We talked about workforce development for our youth. We talked about absenteeism and transportation and the issues there that have to get fixed. And so we're going to work on that. We talked about students experiencing homelessness. And so now it is your turn for public comment. So if anyone, I know Mr. Omar wanted to come up and speak, so please come up to the microphone. If anyone else would like to make a comment or ask a question, please go to Ms. Andrews, grab a yellow card. Thank you so much. Thank you, Anthony. Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have sent you to the mic. Okay, so forget the standalone mic. We're going to have all of our public speakers go to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Childress.
Good evening. I came all the way out here to my, I'm alumni from Woodward High School, too. How about that, Scotty? And I go way back. But the first thing I want to talk about is communication that we're not getting with the city of Cincinnati. I don't know who changed the phone system. When you call Cincinnati now, you go through so many changes. You have so much time wasted, and people don't get back to you. They don't even give you the council people's number anymore. Well, they used to switch it over for you. But I'm here about gentrification. I'm doing a documentary on it. Seemed like people have lost a lot of homes for the elderly in this city. And I have watched, and over the years, to see how this has been going on because we lose a lot, we have lost a lot of black wealth in this city. And it's, and it's, and it's, it's gangsterism. How can you have a partial, partial, that's the ownership of a property, and your taxes comes out of the part that's on your home? But yet, there's another partial because of the lot is so large that they don't let you know about that. And then when it comes up with someone else's name, then you got a problem. This gentrification has got to stop. Scotty said right. You have to invest in people. No one's talking about Mount, I mean, Mount Adams getting ready to fall in the river over there. People put millions of dollars in them properties over there hoping that they could sustain and hold that mountain back over there. It's over for it. And they're not investing in people because they have to make the people, make it right for the people now. Over the last 20 years, they have did detrimental things to black people that own property. And it's still going on. You can't get, you can't get some neighborhoods clean. You can't get your grass cut. City gives you a $500 ticket, and because you are close to them, they think that you're going to run away.
Mr. Childress, I'm so sorry.
I'm going to run, but, I mean, but I just wanted to get that out anyway.
Okay. Mr. Childress, thank you so much. We really appreciate your comments. And you touched on several topics. I know that loss of homes has been a hot topic with Mr. Johnson, with Councilmember Johnson's Public Safety Committee, and we are collecting data on that. So we are definitely looking into it. But thank you so much. We appreciate you. Okay, the next person, Marcy, if you tell. Come on up for your two minutes, please.
All right, okay. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Just real quickly, first of all, this was a great agenda, a great set of topics that needed to be addressed by both entities, so thank you for that. I'm asking if you would consider one other topic next time you convene, and that's the mental health services and mental health resources that are available to our families and our students. I had a very lively conversation recently about that. And our kids are hurting, our families are hurting, and we just don't have enough within CPS for those students to find help. And by extension, families don't have enough resources to address their needs. So I think that's an opportunity to collaborate, to see how we bring those together. Some of the brainstorming we did as we were talking was just equipping our parents with some tools so that they can help. Is that my two minutes already?
No, no, that's one minute. You still have a minute.
So to give parents some tools to work at home to help mitigate some of the things, some of the stresses that they're going through or the kids are going through. So I think that would be an opportunity for collaboration between the school district and the city because there's not enough, there's definitely not enough resources within CPS. I had my own family situation a year ago, trying to find resources for my granddaughter and never did really find them within the district. So it's an opportunity.
Okay, thank you so much. Very important, thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, our next speaker is Jennifer Myrie. Is Jennifer Myrie here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Myrie. I am the Education Chair for the Cincinnati branch of the NAACP.
You've got some fans up there.
I guess so. This meeting has been very impactful, and it has provided a lot of information. But the one thing that I do not hear is value of children. Given our latest report card for the Cincinnati Public Schools, every person in here probably knows a student who's struggling academically. Tonight, what we're doing is we're engaging the community in the village. We are all members of the village now. We are responsible to place value on the children in this village. I'm asking everyone, the esteemed board members, city council, our superintendent, parents, custodians, people in the halls, to engage with the child of Cincinnati Public Schools. These programs are great, they're wonderful, but our children cannot access them if they cannot read. Last thing I want to say is that poverty and ethnicity do not nullify achievement. Every parent, every parent wants to see their child succeed more than they want to breathe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wondered, Ms. Wright, if you wanted to just mention the Be Present campaign? Because that's fine, sure. Because I think that's a phenomenal opportunity for parents, residents, everybody, to get involved with our children with CPS. And I'm really excited about this. And Ms. Wright, we really appreciate the energy you're bringing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Myrie, for the engagement and the call to action for Cincinnati Public Schools. One of the things that we really found through the first 100 days of my transition, we went through a process of listening and learning. And through that, we visited all aspects of the community, had a lot of different town hall sessions, and got a lot of feedback. And what we found is that there is, across the board, it's evidenced tonight, that there is truly an interest and a commitment to the success of our children. And it's in every neighborhood, all 52 neighborhoods in this city. And so at the end of that, our call to action was to ask our Cincinnati community to be present. That's the name of the initiative, be present. Whatever your present is, determine what that is and commit to doing it.
Whatever your present is, determine what that is and commit to doing it. We have a pledge that's on our website, there's a QR code that's on our website. And all we're asking is if your present is being able to tutor, we'd like for you to do that. If it's mentoring, we want you to do that. As a parent, if it's making sure that the backpack is clean at night and there isn't anything there that should not be there before they leave in the morning, we want you to do that. If it's in the neighborhood and you can walk out to the to the mailbox in the morning and encourage students as they're walking to school, we want you to do that. So determine your present and do just that. So again, it's from for all of us. I heard it earlier tonight and I don't remember which presenter said this, but we are a part of the village. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village to transform a school district. It takes a village to keep a community thriving. And all of us are a part of that village. So what so no more than that, be present. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Okay, so as we start moving toward wrap up, and I just want to say to all of my colleagues up here, I'm going to go down the row in a minute and just ask everybody to make quick final remarks. But first, I wanted to ask Ms. Talent to talk about a process that her office has started to do in our neighborhoods, focus groups, and so it's a way that we, or I should say, a process that we wanted to put before you and to see if this is something you might be interested in doing as we go forward. So Ms. Talent.
This live, thank you. Thank you to the chair and to the council and the board. Yes, we've been really excited to partner with the Vice Mayor and the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee as she's taken a tour, not just to Woodward, but to multiple city neighborhoods, most recently over the Rhine and Mount Airy. And as follow up, we've invited people in attendance, people who have engaged in public comment or just interested citizens to come back to the location. Typically, it's a week or two later to talk more about the topics of the meeting and also items that arose during public comment. And then ultimately have worked to distill that down into a document to distribute back to council. Really, the goal is to have a continuous feedback loop with the committee and the community that can be valuable both to the city leadership, to the city manager's office in particular, as we're studying the strategic agenda for the the city and the administration, then also the council as they weigh in on their policy objectives and priorities. So we would welcome that. If there's interest, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about returning to Woodward. And I meant to say it when I stood up initially, just to thank the staff at Woodward, and I think Iris Rowley is still in the House. We've been so fortunate to have you welcome. The Brothers in Motion to use the space and a lot of the entrepreneurial projects that Iris is building. So we'd be happy to start at Woodward. I know we're welcome here, but really for any community or any neighborhood school to come and to listen about what people's priorities are.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rowley, do you care to comment? Okay. All right, well, thank you so much. Ms. Rowley's been working really hard, so we really appreciate her being part of our team. So first of all, let me make sure, does have, have we captured everyone's email here? Do we have all the emails for those? I should ask the Clerk of Council's office, do we have everyone's email? Oh, we do. Okay, all right. So we will be back in touch and we will let you know about next steps. So let me just go down the, I'm going to alternate and just call on each of you to make final comments. And Ms. Autry, I just want to point out, we're doing really well. It's 7:37. Ms. Autry said, there's nowhere we're going to finish by eight. I said, we are, we are committed, being finished on time. Okay, all right. And then I'm going to tell you why we had to be finished on time. Okay, I'll tell you about that later. All right, so we'll start with Ms. Bolton.
I want to thank everybody for being here and thank the folks that have put this together tonight because we can leverage our strengths and we can manage our mutual resources. And together, I think we can solve far more problems and also address so many opportunities together that alone can't. So thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cincinnati, I hope that you saw a smidgen of a collaborative effort to make sure that we are doing everything possible to make sure all of Cincinnati is engaged. I think sometimes we forget about the young people that are the future and we forget about their contribution and their creativity that sometime is misunderstood, but is absolutely needed. So I hope you got a smidgen of this collaborative effort. Everybody up here, except for Ms. Bolton, we ran and campaigned together. So we said there would be a collaborative effort between Cincinnati Public Schools and the city of Cincinnati. And you're seeing that effort. This won't be the last meeting. We've heard a lot of things that we need to continuously work on. So you, we will continue to do that. Cincinnati, everybody's got a part to play. Not just legislatively, just not the school board, the superintendent, the manager and the mayor. Everybody's got a part to play. And I'm going to say something that I never run from. Hold me, hold us all accountable. Hold us accountable. I don't run from accountability. And we got to make sure that when you know better, we will do better. Thank you very much, Cincinnati, and we look forward to your contribution also.
Thank you so much. Okay, Councilmember Jeffries?
Excellent. Thank you first to the Vice Mayor and who and all the folks at CPS. I don't know who on the CPS side pulled together the agenda, but.
It was Mr. Craig at Dr. Moffett.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. I don't serve on this committee, but I came because I think this is super important. To Councilman Johnson's point, I think it's going to be important to do this on a regular basis, like reg, whatever that is, every quarter or whatever. And then we start to shape tangible projects where we work together, where we could demonstrate progress. And even if it's little wins, little things that we do, whether it's Sorda or, you know, Drivers Ed or other things that, okay, we were starting to collaborate and show some results, I think that'll be super critical. So I'm excited to to take take some of those on with us and move us forward. So thank you again.
All right, thank you. Ms. Owen, Councilmember Owens? You know, there's always got to be a tech issue. It just wouldn't be right if it weren't a tech issue, okay?
First, I want to say thank you, Vice Mayor, for your leadership here and bringing two agencies, two entities together. I want to thank Woodward this evening for hosting. I want to thank CPS, of course, your board, administration, and also all of you for taking the time to be here this evening and all of you that are watching tonight. I am excited because I feel like we're at an inflection point in how we solve problems in communities. And that is by not working in silos and working collaboratively. And so I can't say it anymore. You are watching that in progress. And so it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we continue this effort, that we do anchor this in things like data and tracking and measuring and all of those pieces. And I'm sure we'll figure that out together. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, President Protem Parks?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Vice Mayor, Jan Michelle Kearney.
Okay, she, I have to say her whole title. So this is, this is kind of a joke with us because she's like, just call me Vic. It's like, okay, well, you're Vic, but here officially, you're President Protem Parks, so that's why.
Okay, yeah. So this is a wonderful event. And I want to express appreciation and admiration for the effort that went into making it happen. And it's important because what I have learned in leadership is that from the President of the United States down to the President of the VFW or the PTA, that we all have one job and one job only. Our job is to preserve what is good in our society and to correct what needs to be corrected in order to leave a better world for our children. That's what we're trying to do here and I am encouraged. So thank you.
That's excellent. That's excellent. Thank you so much. Ms. Mary Weinberg? Our Olympic gold medalist.
So we have heard the word collaboration quite a bit tonight. And I just want to first thank everyone, the community, for coming out. I want you to know that we do hear your voices. It's very important that you share with us your concerns. When I was sworn into office, I wanted to be an advocate and I wanted to utilize my voice, of course, to making sure and ensuring that our children are getting the best treatment that they're getting. So I do want you to know that whenever you email a board member, especially when you email me, you will get a response, a response. And I want you to know that I hear you. And I just want to thank you all for coming out. And I want to thank my colleagues and of course also the city. I want to thank everyone who took part in this wonderful, impactful night, especially with the presentations. I want to thank our superintendent as well. And I just want to thank everyone and I look forward to collaborating, not just this one time, but a continuous collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to call Councilmember Harris next so that my fellow organizers can can have the last word.
Yeah, thank you. I was like doing the math. I was like, oh, this ain't going to work out. Okay, so I'm going to say two things. So there's a Twitter bot that makes fun of this council first and they count how many times we say thank you for your leadership.
Right.
So I'm going to add to that. I don't want to repeat everything that's said because I agree with my colleagues and this has been fantastic. I do want to point something out. The sister who's the Education Chair for NAACP, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but you.
Jennifer Myrie.
But you said something that went straight to my heart. And we've been talking a lot about systems and we're talking a lot about policy and like, that's good and that's great. But you said, like, what are you doing, like, you like as a person to, you know, impact the life of a CPS student? And so like, you like stumped me there. So that's a, that's a call to action that I will heed, like, thank you for that. That was, I've been sitting here kind of like, oh, hmm, I don't know, in that way. So thank you for that because you just brought it very back to a very human level. And I think President Protem Parks, I mean, like, I wrote it down, preserve what is good and correct what is negatively impacting. I think that this is a great, you know, first step in this. I agree on the frequency that this needs to continue, but also do feel a moment of pride because we talked about this in our 8:00 AM meetings on Wednesdays, you know? And so here we are. But know that there are a lot of moving parts. And one of the things that we do when the Vice Mayor organizes these meetings is that this doesn't sit in a silo. This goes into, you know, climate, environment, infrastructure. It goes into equitable growth and housing, right? It goes into public safety. Like, we take this information and we think about how it impacts. And so you will see, and even if you look at policies, where these issues are a part of those solutions. So know that this does not sit in a silo.
Thank you so much. And, you know, Councilmember Harris, I have to say, when Ms. Myrie asks, what are we doing for CPS students? Well, Councilmember Harris has spent a lot of time at SCPA. He choreographed a ballet and worked tirelessly with these students. Yes, you did. And we were all there in awe, was just totally in awe. I mean, it was really fantastic. So and I said, I don't even know how you found the time for that. But he was over there working with our students. So that, yeah, that was huge. So thank you for that. That was a lot of time and effort. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Craig, Brandon Craig.
Let me just start by saying, since we're finishing a little early, Councilmember Harris will be doing a performance later. So all of y'all who are not able to attend. No, I really, again, I think everyone has said it here, we very appreciative of everybody who came today and everybody who's been showing support for these issues and everyone who takes the time to give of their time to help others. I think that's the real parts of this that's, that's the challenge, that we all have to give of something of ourselves to help others. And the way we do that best for our young folks is to give us what we can, give how we can. As Superintendent said, you know, whatever your present is, be present. So I think as we move forward, I think the role for us and the task for us and the charge for us is how do we maintain that opportunity to do something good, to make something good come of this? To make sure that we're impacting our young people in our schools and in beautiful schools like this one here so that everybody can see that we have some wonderful schools in this district who with wonderful kids and wonderful teachers and wonderful staff and wonderful families. I think that's the one thing we sometimes forget about. We talk about working with kids, there's a family there that's a part of every one of these kids' lives that's impacted by everything they do in a school. And so I'm really excited for us to be able to impact those families. And I look forward to having more folks come out the next time and tell us more things that we can be doing to help out.
All right, thank you so much. Dr. Kareem Moncrief Moffett?
So I wanted to, I promised I'll be short-winded a little bit, but I forgot to mention some of the staff that I don't, I'm not, I'm not familiar with. But I want to apologize to them because you are, please blame it on my my head, not my heart, because you are integral parts of CPS. So thank you to all of the staff that are here. It's it's late at night on a Thursday and I appreciate you. A lot of work goes into this behind the scenes that people don't realize. And so I want to make sure that I am publicly saying thank you to everyone that did something small or big to make this happen because it takes a lot of work. It has taken a lot of work on in the background for the three of us to coordinate schedules just to get this date. This was supposed to be in September and then we moved it to October. It's just been crazy. When you look at up here at all of these people, we each have busy schedules, but the commitment to getting engagement has never wavered. The dedication and the commitment of these people and the staff has been consistent. And I want to make sure that I appreciate that. I also want to say that through the, through our run, our run, you all have heard me talk about engagement is an action. It's something that we do consistently. It's something that we do regularly and together. So we plan on doing this again. We want to hear your voice. It is important. I want to have more students here. I want to have more parents speak up. We can't fix what we don't know. And as long as we do it together, as long as you come ready for some work for the solution, we are in it, dedicated and ready to work. So thank you to everyone in the background, everyone up here. Thank you so much for all that you've done for our kids, because that's my wheelhouse. When I ran for office, I ran because I see hope in 36,000 students. I see hope in every single one of them.
Absolutely.
And it hurts me that some of their light is dimmed because they can't get to school. So I'm going to be, I've been described and I'm going to claim as being a fierce advocate for students. To get a bus, to get their learning, I want them to have that. I want to make sure that that light is there. And I think I stand with three people that are not here from the school board, but the other ones that are up here on this stage to say that we are ready to work for not only the students of CPS, but the city of Cincinnati. So thank you so much to everybody up here.
Thank you, Dr. K. And, you know, we'll be, we'll be talking first thing Monday morning about those buses, Ms. Bolton. So, okay, so everybody, I just want to thank you. I mean, you're awesome, all of you up here, all of you out there, all of you watching on on city cable, really appreciate you. So just to tell you real quickly, okay, I'm going to out Officer Hawkins because he he came to my office. He said, you're having the meeting November 10th. Do you know what night this is? Okay, does anybody know what night this is? Well, this is the opening of Wakanda. So everybody, and I, and I know, Marcie Ifeetel, you got, you got to tell your husband about this because we, he always does this. All right, so everybody, this is Wakanda night. That means the power is in the room. And so thank you so much. Thank you for being here and we will be in touch.